Okay, so good evening Chair Harrington and Board. And it looks like we're all improvising this evening. So we can go ahead and move to Slide 2. So the purpose of tonight is really a little different than my normal presentations. I really want to provide us some time to really acknowledge that we have been faced with COVID-19 for 12 months now. And just kind of review and acknowledge and honor the people who have been so impacted in the past year. So if you can go back to a year ago, many of us, I think at least four of us, Chair Harrington's like, I don't want to go back a year, just in your thoughts. Many of us, I think four of us, Commissioner Treese, Chair Harrington, Commissioner Willie, and I think at the time Commissioner Scouton, we were all in Washington DC together. And I know I was getting ready to celebrate my birthday on February 28, 2020, in Washington DC with all of you, when I got that fateful call from Tricia Mortel, who said, "Happy Birthday, Marnie, but I have some news for you." And then she shared with me that we, Washington County, had the first confirmed case of COVID-19 in the state of Oregon. So we spent that evening talking a lot about what we knew at the time. And when I look back, one of the things that I think about the most is how much that has changed over time, what we knew about coronaviruses and what we've learned since then. So you can see in this chart, March 4th, your board went right into action right away and declared an emergency for our county, Washington County. March 12th, the governor began the messages around social distancing we called at that time. And we have since moved to really trying to describe it as physical distancing, but keep those social important ties together. March 13th, due to cases in our public schools, all schools were closed. March 18th unfortunately marks the date of our first Washington County death. March 23rd, the Stay Home Save Lives Order. April 3rd, CDC's recommendations around face covering. Before then, it was really confusing and we weren't sure whether the general public needed to wear face coverings. We were even saying you shouldn't because we need to save them for our healthcare system. And then we learned over time that it was very important that we wear face covering. May 5th was a day of celebration. Our first COVID-19 patient had been in the hospital and ICU on ventilators. And finally, on May 5th, we all celebrated and the health systems and the family definitely celebrated when he was released from the hospital. June 1st, we entered Phase 1 of reopening. And then November 18th through December 2nd, we started our two-week statewide freeze, which for Washington County really lasted much longer because we moved to this new risk-based system. And we remained in extreme risk, as you all know, until about two weeks ago. And then some hope arrived. December 15th, Oregon receives the first doses of COVID-19 vaccine. Yay! January 1st, you see the school metrics and advisories. We're providing some flexibility for schools to begin planning more in-person learning. We moved, as you know, a couple of weeks ago to high-risk. Washington County stood up our Vaccine Equity Message Center on February 10th, which you'll learn a little bit more about, and I think you've seen in our communication. And tonight, we're really looking back and also really hoping to look forward with some hope. So just a little walk. And I don't know about you, but I'm like, "That was a lot." So with that, next slide please. Just a little bit of a reminder that we are still, we do still have cases. And we are still seeing a huge disproportionate impact on our Latinx community. And you can see in this chart that 41% of our cases over time, this is over time, are attributed to Latinx population, although it's only about 15% of our total population. So I just want to keep that front and center as we acknowledge and really honor the impact that this has had on our community. So we'll go to Slide 4. And this is a Spanish video. And in the story, we learn about the confusion and fear experienced by a woman from our Latinx community after she tested positive for COVID-19. And so I just wanted to play this short video for you. And then ask us to, after this video, we'll move into a moment of silence. So Chuck, if you wouldn't mind starting the video? So I'm not hearing sound. I don't know if others are?
Sorry, we have this working. I'll get this checked in.
Okay, thank you. So why he's getting that set up, I want to just remind us that in Washington County, we've had over 200 deaths. And you probably have seen nationally that we're also really acknowledging and taking a moment to recognize the burden because there's been over half a million deaths nationally. So we'll see if this video is ready.
Go ahead, Marnie.
Okay, are we ready to, will it play now?
Yes, we are. Sorry about that.
No, perfect. Thank you, Chuck.
El día que yo me di cuenta que había dado positivo al coronavirus, fueron tantas emociones encontradas. Lo primero que pasó por mi mente es me voy a morir. El primer síntoma que empecé yo a sentir fue dolor de cuerpo. Sentí mucho cansancio, no tenía hambre, mucho dolor de cabeza y dolor de huesos, y fiebre también. El mayor reto para mí como madre fue decirte a ti misma y hacerte creer de que vas a salir de esta. Tienes que hacerlo por tus hijos. Y pedir perdón por no haber tenido, no haber tomado mejor conciencia y no haber creído en que en realidad estaba pasando este virus. Empezaron a llegar llamadas a preguntarnos, o a preguntarme qué si necesitaba comida, qué necesitaba, ¿verdad?, para estar cómoda. Entonces, mi consejo es de que no tomen las cosas a la ligera. Hay mucha gente que se está muriendo, aunque te aburras, aunque estés encerrado en casa, piensa de que el día de mañana, ¿verdad? Siempre decimos, al final del túnel hay esa lucecita. Entonces, hay que pensar ahorita, hay que verlas, cambiar las cosas y verlas positivas. No hay seres más cariñosos, amigables y hospitalarios que los latinos. Y el COVID-19 se aprovecha de eso. Métela el freno expresando tu amor y apoyo por medios seguros sin contacto físico. Solo por ahora. Súmate a la lucha. Tus acciones cuentan.
Thank you, Chuck. So we can move to the next slide. So I would just like to ask us to take a moment in silence to really acknowledge the suffering, the 200 lives lost in Washington County, over 2,000 in the state of Oregon, and over half a million nationally. So if we can just take a moment of silence. With that, next, hopefully, we have some of the other staff ready to be able to share also. So what we've asked is some staff, including our Public Health Division Manager. We're going to start with Tricia Mortel, Public Health Division Manager, to just talk about how their lives, both professionally and personally, have been impacted by COVID-19 over the past year. So we have Tricia and several staff who are just going to take a couple of minutes to share from their work and their perspective, the impact that this has had over the past year.
Thank you, Marnie. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So as we hit this one-year mark and we really acknowledge the impact to individuals, families, community, it can be a heavy heart that we are leading with. I know every day when I had the morning report, I held my breath a little bit. How many cases will we have today? And as we saw them climb during the Thanksgiving holiday and winter months, I think we took another hard breath and said, "How are we going to stop this?" I also hoped every day that I wouldn't see another death on our morning report. But I do know throughout this whole year, we've had a lot of gratitude. The gratitude is that we have done a good job in Oregon and in the county. If we compare what has happened in other parts of the community, we have done the hard work to slow down this disease and prevent more loss of life and more community heartbreak. So as Marnie mentioned, I'm bringing a few people to you today, and it's my great honor to share with you some of the folks who are behind the scenes every day, not only during this pandemic, but every day during the needs of the community to prevent disease. First, we'll hear from Kathleen Reed. Kathleen is one of our epidemiologists. We think of our epidemiologists as our disease detectives. They help us gather data, they help us scrub the data, they help us coordinate and connect the data, and they feed us those reports. So we know where is the disease in our community, where is it likely to spread, and what can we do about it. They also really help us to understand who's most impacted. Marnie showed you a slide that you've seen many times about the impact to communities of color, and particularly the Latinx community here. We need to focus our attention where the disease is most impactful, and we know that we have limited resources. So we always look at the data to help us determine what to do next. Next, you'll hear from Chris Keating, one of our public health nursing supervisors. Chris and the epidemiologist, along with often environmental health specialists, go charging into disease prevention work. But typically, it's only with about 10 people. As you've heard over the course of this year, we have built a team of over 100. And Chris had to create, recreate, and recreate, and recreate, and recreate. How are we going to work together? How are we going to become efficient and effective with case investigation, contact tracing, and disease mitigation? That is so important in this fight. After that, you'll hear from Ruby Vigara-Grindell. Ruby is a brave soul. She's one of those individuals in our community who joined us during this pandemic. She's part of the Oregon Public Health Institute workforce. OPHI is a local nonprofit who we contracted with to hire, train, supervise many dedicated local residents. It was a value, an important value of us to employ those that we knew were probably without a job at this point, and very talented folks. She will tell you a little bit about the work that she's been doing to support individuals and families during their COVID isolation and quarantine experiences. And finally, Erin Doyle will share more about the work the county did to support many of the broader impacts to the community, the impacts of mental health, the impacts of the economy and our support structure, and how the board's investment of the CARES Act funds made a difference. So I can't say enough about what a stellar team Washington County has on a daily basis and has been able to put in place to manage this pandemic. Without all of these truly dedicated, passionate, and talented folks, we would have seen more life loss and more heartbreak and more community impact. So I think if we can all get them all on camera, we can start with Kathleen. Kathleen?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
All right, great. So I'm going to discuss how our epidemiologists have been involved in this response over the past year. Washington County epidemiologists have been an integral part of the COVID response since the first case in Oregon was identified in our county a year ago this week. Before the state and the CDC had investigative guidelines available to guide county case and contact investigations, Washington County already had COVID-19 cases to investigate. This meant that our epidemiologists had to develop their own scripts and questions to assess where cases became infected, identify and quarantine close contacts, and provide education about how to prevent loved ones from getting the disease. As our response continued and we had evidence that COVID-19 was widespread in our community, Washington County epidemiologists focused on who was at highest risk for severe disease and complications, and which populations were really being disproportionately affected. It quickly became clear that there were disparities in our community in terms of who was and were not getting COVID-19, as well as who was most vulnerable. This was most prominent in terms of age and race ethnicity, with older residents in care facilities in our Latinx population being hardest hit. Our epidemiologists brought and continue to bring this data to county and community partners to build strike teams addressing outbreaks in high-risk settings, and to inform resource allocation, education needs, and testing campaigns. The continued review of this data by our epidemiologists has allowed us to shift Washington County's prevention and education efforts as this response has progressed. As an example, when we saw a surge in young adults testing positive for COVID-19 this past fall, it allowed our county messaging to really focus on encouraging specific behaviors, changes, and more precautions for that population in particular. Washington County epidemiologists have also worked diligently to make our COVID-19 data visually accessible. We've published a number of publicly available dashboards demonstrating the impact of COVID-19 on our community. And we're continuing to work to see how we can make that data more available internally and externally to our partners. Today, we're very proud to have a team of epidemiologists leading outbreak investigations in long-term care facilities, homeless and sheltered populations, correctional institutions, migrant camps, schools and daycares, and high-risk workplace settings throughout Washington County. Epidemiologists are our disease detectives, as Tricia said. In each outbreak investigation, these EPIs are really asking the questions to determine how the infection entered a facility, looking at all the various ways that COVID-19 can continue to spread within that setting, and then using all of that information to make specific and pragmatic recommendations to each facility so that we can stymie the spread of COVID-19 and prevent further illness, hospitalization, and death. The novelty of COVID-19 has meant that what we know and what we don't know is persistently evolving. The initial case investigations that our Washington County epidemiologists led informed how Oregon approached the groundwork for COVID-19 investigations throughout the entire state. And we're very proud of that. As the response continues, our epidemiologists are constantly integrating new information and considerations into our processes, such as looking for reinfection and variant cases, so that we're able to more fully understand how COVID-19 continues to spread and impact our community. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about what our EPIs have done this year.
Chris, if you would, go ahead.
Yeah, so good evening Chair Harrington and County Commissioners, and also thank you for the opportunity to speak. Though not as visible as first responders or medical staff in hospitals, public health nurses have been no less affected by the relentless pace and the rigorous workload ushered in by the COVID pandemic. The last few days, I was able to speak with some of the nurses, and here's what they wanted to share. The public often trusts us as nurses. Even with the rising level of government mistrust, nurses can often work with individuals to correct information and decrease fear and stigma. This nurse went on to say, "When I speak to families in Spanish, I can hear how grateful they were to be able to converse in their own words and language. I offered not just education, but reassurance and true concern for their well-being. I helped clear up misconceptions and teach them how to protect family, access testing, and how to speak to their employers." More than once, these conversations ended with, "God bless you." Public health nurses bring strong clinical skills, but their strength lies in their ability to look at the whole individual and address the needs that often impede their ability to safely quarantine. Nurses are acutely aware that trauma preceded this pandemic for many, and was only intensified by the growing sea of misinformation that circulated through news and media. Our nurse spoke of the work with a person that recently transitioned to a sober living facility. After testing positive for COVID-19, they had to be transferred to the respite shelter to isolate. These person's needs were unique, and we could not separate them from the public health requirement to have them isolate. Staying in a hotel room alone created a crisis for this person that threatened both their sobriety and their ability to isolate safely. The team worked to allow more frequent fresh air breaks, routine phone calls to increase interactions with house members and mentors, as well as activities to help pass time in quarantine. This person completed quarantine and returned back to their facility successfully. Another example of public health nurses at work involved a convent of aging nuns that experienced an outbreak of COVID. After providing education, there was concern for the health and safety of the sisters, whose living situation left them vulnerable. The outbreak team supplied PPE supplies to the convent and worked to find organizations who would support the sisters to shelter in place. This included reaching out to the Catholic Archdiocese of Portland to make them aware of the sisters and garner all available support. The nurse ended the story with this. "The situation was truly touching to many of us. Seeing how we came together and worked as a team to serve our community is really a special thing. I truly feel that as much as our team went above and beyond, it was because it's our job to, that's what we do, care for people in our community when they need it most." Washington County was the first to bring concerns of discrimination of COVID-positive farm workers in the worksite to the attention of the state, pulling multiple agencies together. We not only changed the outcome of one worker, but we helped instigate a statewide response to support workers and identify COVID discrimination in Oregon. This is only a brief overview of the many stories and the impact that the Washington County nurses have had in the community in the last year. The public health nurses have touched so many lives in the past 12 months. We in Public Health have faced an Ironman marathon, but we were asked to do it at a sprinter's pace. We kept moving, even if we had to walk sometimes. But we've shown amazing resilience in Washington County, and my pride at working here will last well beyond this pandemic. Thank you again for allowing me this time to share this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ruby?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Ruby, and I am a resource coordinator and case manager on our quarantine support team. And our team, basically what we do is we connect people who are currently in quarantine or in isolation due to COVID-19 with resources to help them get through that time. The two ways that we do this is either by connecting them with community-based organizations that are matched with a client's cultural and linguistic needs to provide them resources, or connecting them to our internal county quarantine support team, of which I am a team member. And the resources we provide basically is, if the client qualifies, one month of assistance with rent and bills, as well as food that can be delivered to their house during their quarantine period. Additionally, we can provide connection to our free COVID counseling program if they so desire, and referral to additional community resources if that's something they need. We're a pretty accessible program, which is one of the reasons I'm really happy to be able to participate in. We have generous income qualifications and do not ask about legal status or other confidential information from our clients. And I think this is really important because, like some people were mentioning earlier, a lot of the clients we do work with may have some prior trauma or mistrust relating to government services. And so it's really important to be able to reassure our clients that all our work is confidential and won't harm them in the future. Most of our staff on our county quarantine support team are bilingual, Spanish, English, and some speak additional languages. Some client demographics that I've noticed that come through often are Latinx folks, low-income folks, undocumented folks, sole income earners, and essential workers. And now I'm just going to provide two examples of clients that I've recently assisted using fake names, so that you can all see examples of who we're assisting. So the first client profile is Delia. She's a Latina woman whose husband is a gardener and has not had steady work since the pandemic began, which made them late on their bills even before I spoke to them. Delia tested positive in October, and she and her family had to take time off work without pay. Luckily, because we were under the prior CARES Act funding, we were able to provide two months of assistance because they really needed that help at that time. In January of 2021, her husband tested positive, and they had another two-week unpaid quarantine. Luckily, we were able to assist with one more month of bills and rent assistance. And then afterwards, I provided phone numbers for other assistance programs for more long-term support. The second client example is Laura. She's another Latina woman. When I first spoke to her, she was in tears, very stressed out about the fact that she was COVID-positive, and also a lot of other things going on in our house. When I spoke to her, her stove had just broke, so she wasn't able to cook good meals for her family. And at that point, she was the only positive person, but being the person who supports her family, who cooks for her children, her children were the ones who were having to isolate in their rooms while she was, you know, outside doing the cooking and trying to take care of them while she was sick. This was a really hard time for Laura, but luckily, I was able to provide a referral to our COVID counseling programs so that she could connect with someone who could do more long-term emotional support with her. And then also, of course, our program, being able to support with rent, bills, and food, was a big relief for her. Our work is very urgent, as I'm sure you all have gathered. Case managers know from referring clients to other organizations that county-wide community resources are exhausted or experiencing delays. And it is very important we continue to fund, support, and make programs like ours accessible during the pandemic. And plan and build for when the eviction moratorium and other temporary relief will expire, and even more Oregonians will be left without the means to cover their expenses and debts accrued during the pandemic. Working for this program has not only shown me how vital this work is in the present moment, but also how there is a huge lack in accessible, equitable, and adequately staffed and funded public service programs that can support the huge number of people who live in chronic poverty due to social inequalities that go far beyond the pandemic. I hope that by collectively building up these programs now, we can help us prepare for a better future. Thank you.
So much. And Erin, pop it up for us.
Thank you. In addition to all the major work you've just heard about so far that's directly dealing with the impact- In addition to all the major work you've just heard about so far that's directly dealing with the impacts of COVID on individuals and the disease itself, staff from across Washington County has been working to address the needs of the entire community. Our community has been working to follow the guidelines that have kept many of us at home and physically distanced, and that work has taken a toll on all of us, both emotionally and in our community's economy. To address these needs, county staff has put together mental health assistance, built support programs for businesses, invested in childcare, assisted our partner governments, and supported our local nonprofits. Primarily, I've worked with a work group that is focused on business recovery, and we put together multiple strategies to try and address the economic impact many of our smallest businesses were feeling during this last year. The biggest portion of the work we did was related to the grants that we provided. These were small grants, but they were grants that made a difference to these business owners. We partnered with cities, we partnered with MISO to get these grants out to the smallest businesses, many of whom don't have the access to traditional other programs that we're also providing assistance to businesses. So, folks who are sole proprietors, first-time business owners, immigrant-owned from disproportionately historically underserved communities. And these small grants, as I've heard from multiple business owners, provided the breathing room that they needed to kind of figure out where they were going and how they could continue. I want to read a couple of emails I got from a couple of businesses who were provided grants early on in this shutdown of our economy. One grant recipient said, "I think for me, it was hope in a sea of paperwork and uncertainty, especially for a microbusiness. As a business who focuses on startups or assisting small businesses with small budgets, my incoming receivables immediately dried up, yet my payables kept coming. I understood my clients were scared and holding on to their money. I couldn't blame them. I'm fortunate to have savings, but being widowed and of sole income, I could not see when this would end, so how could I plan? How much savings could I risk and still have time to recoup before retirement? When large group gatherings dried up almost instantly, the opportunity to speak and field new clients from these engagements did too. So, both sources of income were on hold with very little notice. Making it more painful, I have been able to help many of my business clients secure incomes or loans through the PPP program in the last two months, and yet have not been successful myself. I am incredibly grateful. For me, the money was a month's respite because I purposely kept my overhead low, but the ray of hope was more significant than any monetary amount during a stressful time." Another business owner told us about another round of grants. "We have been serving a community in Bethany, Cedar Mill, Rock Creek area since 2003 by providing martial arts training through our unique character-building program. As an immigrant entrepreneur, it feels great to know that our local leadership had my back. This was the first time in our existence when we had to close our doors for such a long time. As it has been tough on everyone, it's been tough on us as well. Five days into the closure, we were able to pivot and begin to provide services to our students via online platforms. We did lose membership, but we've had tremendous support from our community. This grant provided the much-needed breathing room for our business because even though our revenue is currently down 70%, we kept all our staff members on payroll. The grant from Washington County helped pay for partial rent and utility." These are the stories I heard from multiple businesses, and it's that finding of hope that we were able to provide through our business-assistant grants to longstanding, small businesses throughout our county. But in addition, we found other ways to support these businesses through the Business Recovery Centers. In partnership with the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce, Beaverton Chamber of Commerce, Twelton Chamber of Commerce, and Adalante Mujeres, we worked to provide one-on-one assistance to any business that walked in the door, metaphorically or in actuality. They provided educational opportunities, support. They literally held people's hands as they filled out grant applications, both for our program and for other programs that existed at the federal level or at the state level. They delivered personal protective equipment to businesses that came in, and they provided all types of business advice as people tried to adjust their normal work habits to those that were COVID-safe and compliant with the guidance of the state. But we didn't just stop with businesses. We also worked on investing in the workforce, providing people who had lost their jobs because they worked in industries that were so stricken that they wanted to find another opportunity. Working with partners like Work Systems, Inc., Portland Community College, Central Cultural, and the City of Hillsborough, we helped provide new career path information for Washington County residents. These paths focused on jobs where opportunities continue to exist, such as manufacturing and healthcare. But the county did more. We provided assistance to childcare providers who are vital to making sure that folks who can't stay home and must go to work have the place that is safe and compliant with COVID guidelines to keep their kids while they go to work. We provided assistance through community partners like THPRD to assist with providing mental health and psycho-mental psyche programs to keep kids healthy and safe. And we also provided significant resources to our community-based organizations. As one person has said in some videos you'll probably see later this month, life is more than just food and rent. Life is art. Life is community. Life is having conversations with people who understand where you come from. And our community-based organizations provide that connection throughout the county, both in serving the general population, but also culturally-specific and culturally-responsive programming. I have heard so many stories about the needs, frustrations, the spirit of giving of other businesses, the gratitude that our businesses have, and the generosity they provide one another through multiple means of sharing information, sharing resources, and giving up grants when they thought they could make it. We have worked as a county to be clear, informative, coordinated, and responsive to all of these types of needs. And for me, I've seen the strength of this county come through in every department that has been asked to do more and to do much outside of what they normally do. And coordinating all of that and telling that story as a Government Relations Manager for this county has had an impact on what we've been able to do. Thank you for this opportunity to share these stories and to be a part of this moment as we remember one year of very hard work that we have all done.
Thank you, Tricia, Kathleen, Chris, Ruby, and Erin. You've shared your work with us, and you've shared your heart with us. And as we go through this remembrance tonight, we're definitely remembering and honoring the people who lost lives, remembering and honoring the impact to our community, but we're also remembering and honoring the work that each of you represent. There's hundreds of people behind you throughout HHS, Support Services, Clean Water Services, our Government Relations Committee engagement throughout the county. Everybody really has made us proud to be able to serve our county. So, thank you for representing that and sharing your work and your hearts with us tonight. So, we can go to the next slide. So, I just wanted to let you know that the remembrance and activities won't end tonight. We are asking the Board to adopt a proclamation that we're bringing on March 2nd, and we're also finalizing a location to have a luminary display to honor the lives lost to COVID-19 in Washington County. We've also shared some ideas with our city partners, and many of them have already issued proclamations and statements and/or are planning to do so through proclamations, moments of silence, displaying lights, hanging lights in trees. And so, I think that you'll see remembrance and honoring throughout the county the rest of this month. So, we can go ahead to the next slide. So, although there's a lot of hope, we do still have cases in Washington County. And so, I am just sharing our cumulative cases to date. Over 20,000 cases. We've had, over the past year, 951 hospitalizations. And as we've honored and remembered, we've had 212 lives lost. You can see also the number of outbreaks that we're still working on. So, there's a lot of hope, but we still have work to do, and we still need to be vigilant. So, I think, next slide. So, this slide should be really fill us full of hope. So, this is our case numbers, and you can see that we are starting to go down the other side of this huge mountain. And in order to keep doing that, we have to be vigilant, and we have to keep up with wearing masks, making sure that we're maintaining our physical distance, and that we're doing our handwashing and all of our cleaning and sanitizing. And as vaccine becomes available and your population is eligible, to please get your vaccination. So, that moves us into Vaccination Update. We can go to the next slide. So, as of February 23rd this week, seniors over the age of 70 are now eligible. But remember, we are still having some shortages of vaccine compared to the demand for vaccine. We continue to work to make sure that our healthcare workers, first responders, our education, school staff, and childcare staff also continue to be eligible and continue to get into our vaccine clinics. Recently, in Washington County, over the past week, 800 doses were provided at Pacific University through a drive-through clinic. Over 700 doses through Twelton Hills Parks and Recreation were provided by our partner, TVFNR. And then there were second-dose clinics held at the Hillsborough Medical Center, other TVFNR sites, and for our Public Health Medical Reserve Corps in the Beaverton area over the past weekend. Next slide. So, upcoming, TVFNR is preparing a clinic for the first week in March, where they will be able to provide over 1,000 doses. And beginning March 1st, our 65 and older will be eligible. At that point, public health has started, is planning and finalizing two to three small clinics a week that'll be done in partnership with our community-based organizations and outreach to our BIPOC community. So, we're having clinics at the Muslim Educational Trust, working with Central Cultural and Asian Health Services, among others, to make sure that we're bringing the smaller clinics as close to the community in need as we're able. The other thing is, you've heard a little bit in my email communication about our Toll Free Message Center. So, the Toll Free Message Center was stood up because we recognize that it is difficult to navigate the appointment scheduling system through OHA, especially if you don't know how to navigate the internet very well, if you're confused, if you can't remember passwords, like all of us struggle with, all these passwords, and we're asked to put in an email that maybe we haven't used in five years. All kinds of experiences like that, people struggling with the internet. And then, in addition to that, have language barriers, it can be really difficult to navigate those systems. And so, our Toll Free Message Center is really designed to assist people with those kind of barriers that are struggling with making the appointment on the internet or who have language barriers. You can see the languages there. We have services available in 12 languages. And for other languages, we're able to connect with telephone interpretation assistance. And to date, we've helped 184 people get scheduled for their vaccines through this message center. Okay, next slide. Some more good news. So, this is a graph of our case rate. And like the case numbers, you can see that that graph is certainly going in the right direction now. And you probably have heard by now the announcement by the Governor's Office that Washington County's case rate has fallen to 93.7 per 100,000. And that means we are able and will move to moderate-risk category beginning on Friday. So, this means that there can be more capacity indoor dining, for example, other indoor activities such as gyms and entertainment, and more capacity outdoor venues. For us in Washington County and for many offices, we continue and the guidance continues to stress the importance that if you can telecommute, you should continue to telecommute. But it does offer the opportunity for more in-person meetings when that really becomes essential. So, we can move to the next slide. This is the last slide. We want those graphs that I've shown you, two graphs tonight. We want them to continue to go down. We'd like to continue to go down to low-risk and then even lower in our case numbers. And so, it's just a really important reminder to choose your activities carefully. Just because you can do more indoor activities, you really need to think about, is it crowded? Am I putting myself at risk? Am I going to be comfortable wearing a face covering the entire time that I'm in that setting? Other than, of course, eating. And then, you know, we are still asking people, when you're outside of your house, you need to wear a well-fitting face covering that covers your mouth and nose and fits well. Limit large gatherings, even as we move into moderate. The recommendation is to keep those large gatherings limited, especially social gatherings, to still continue only two households. Better to be outdoors than indoors, and to limit the number of people, six to eight people. And absolutely, please continue to stay home if you're not feeling well. And when you are eligible and vaccine is available, please get in line, get your vaccine. In the long run, that's going to be a really important tool so that we can all continue to flatten that curve, lower that rate, and continue to move towards more normalcy, which is what we all want. Part of this acknowledgement and remembrance is also, I'm going to end with just a great big thank you to the Board, to the staff, and to our community. We would not be here if our community had not supported these recommendations and done their best to follow the recommendations, even when it was exquisitely painful at times to continue to not see our grandkids, to not go to the gym, to wear those face coverings. Our community has done it, and I think that we will continue to do that. So, with that, I will end and open it up to any questions that you have.
Commissioners, any comments, expressions of gratitude, or questions you may have? Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Well, thank you. Thank you for putting this program, if you will, together tonight. It was extremely moving and, you know, just so impactful to, as Marnie so eloquently said, to look at the combination of the staff, the community, the leadership, all working together toward a common end. And I just want to say that this has been an amazing year for all of us. It was, as a relatively new commissioner, it's certainly not what anybody expected. And I'm right at the front of that line. But I also, as a new person, learned a great deal from our staff about what it means to be a public servant. And I want you to know how grateful I am for that learning experience. And I want you to know how grateful I am for that learning experience as well as the feeling of just getting in and working hard altogether to make a difference. So thank you, and thank you to the staff.
Any other commissioners? Well, I would like to express my gratitude. You know, it starts with my fellow colleagues on the Board of Commissioners and as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. We really held together in the face of a lot of community pressure. But we supported the science, and we continue to support the science. There were a lot of pressures that we faced to move around the science. But we were able to continue to be guided by the science and the great policy direction from our public health team and from our county administration and Clean Water Services as well because of their hard work and their expertise. I'm really thankful that through Tricia, Kathleen, Christine, Ruby, Erin, that we were able to bring forward more community voices in the experience, the extraordinary experience that we have all had this last year. Marnie, I really appreciated this presentation, particularly that timeline that set the stage for all of this. What an incredible year. None of it was known territory, you know. In the beginning of March being, I was absolutely terrified that we weren't going to have enough respirators to deal with the public demand, let alone the hospital capacity. And through Diane's science team at Clean Water Services, through Marnie's public health team, as supported as well and led by Tricia, we were able to learn more together and to digest science from the CDC and to hear about those community needs, week in, week out, month in, month out. And we continued to pivot. The agility, the dedication and discipline from all of the employees at Washington County and Clean Water Services, whether they were full-time employees as of February 28th or as they came onboard. In addition to all of our community partners, nonprofits, CBOs and otherwise, and all the other agencies, Work Systems, Inc., PCC, you name it, all the chambers, everyone pulled together to try and help our community members through this extraordinary time. And as we've recognized today, we're not out of the woods yet. We need to keep making smart choices, to be vigilant about wearing our face masks, double masking, washing our hands, practicing social distancing, while taking care of our mental health and physical health too. Self-care is important. We will get there. We're all starting to learn more about what it means to take safe vacations, safe trips, to get out and about safely. So as expressed here, please get your vaccination as soon as you can. I'm really grateful and proud of the work that the Washington County team has done to provide the special vaccination clinics for those harder-to-reach community members here in Washington County and beyond. So onward ho we go. It's only February 23rd. We want to get to having everyone vaccinated, hopefully everyone, before the end of the year. I watched the national news this evening and saw that multiple vaccination manufacturers have doubled down and said they'll be able to vastly increase the number of doses available by the July timeframe, which is tremendous news because we do still have scarcity of the vaccinations. So as Marnie said, there is great hope. And I'm just so thankful that we've all managed through this together. A lot to be grateful for. Thank you again, Marnie, Tricia, and everyone else on the team. I really appreciate it. And also to my colleagues, really appreciate it.